Township of Precipity, Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, February 10th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the flag salute. Mr. Valori, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Palusa?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Present.
Mr. Valori?
Here.
Others present: Mayor James R. Barberio, Ellen M. Sandman, Business Administrator, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Esquire Township Attorney, Yancey Reser, Ms. Township Clerk. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of February 24th, 2015. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance: Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by following the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on January 8, 2015. Wherever it is, it remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on January 12, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14, 2015, and was voted by fax to the local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8, 2015. No council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision. Public access Channel 21 at 11:00 AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Okay, we're going to be going into closed session. Resolution: Whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, public law 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and contract negotiations, and whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township Council of the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn by myself.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yeah, before I vote, I'd just like to voice my objection to having so many closed-session meetings before our regular meeting. If there's any way we can delay closed-session meetings to the end, we should certainly try to do it.
Yeah, I had requested, I had made the request of Council President Karifi because there is a matter that I would like to discuss with you in closed session that I think you may want to consider voting upon tonight. So that's the reason for the closed session at the beginning of the meeting. Otherwise, you know, I would not have made that request.
This is potential action tonight?
Correct. That's the reason why I had made the request of the Council President to go into close at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Palusa?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be back shortly.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Palusa?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Ordinances for second readings and public hearings. Ordinance 2015:01. Any questions, concerns? No. Status of adopted ordinances? None. Discussion reminders. I would just like to, just real quick, under discussions, as we all know, Mr. Frank Calabria passed away from Board of Ed, and he volunteered for 40 years on our Board of Ed. I would like to see if we, as the council, can do a certificate for appreciation to Mr. Calabria, and maybe we can contact his family and present that. And, Mayor, if you want to do anything for him as well.
Yeah.
Would everybody be in favor of that?
Absolutely.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Council President, for your information, the Rotary Club, you know, they have their distinguished service awards banquet the end of the month, and their Citizen of the Year was to be Frank Calabria.
Yes.
They're looking to see if his family would, okay, if they went ahead and honored him anyway, and if the family says yes, there will be a presentation made there to Frank and to his family. Maybe that would be a good time to present ours, too.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm all right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else?
Council President, I would like to just give you a brief reminder, I'm going to try to do an administrator's report. Administration, I think, did I miss it, or did I?
No, we haven't got it.
Under discussions, I have one more thing I'd like to bring up, if I may.
Go ahead.
By now, we all know that there's not going to be an audit, but as many of the people in this audience have requested, I have a redacted list of all of Mr. Inglisino's charges regarding James Karifi, and that total was $236,000 and change. And I also have a redacted copy of all of Aurora's bills, okay, for that same issue, and their charges came to $244,000 and change. Now, what I would like to make a motion to do is, all of these charges from Aurora, everyone's, many people have asked, you know, how could they possibly spend that many hours looking at a computer? And I would like to have them come and make a presentation, who they are, what their qualifications are, how they could justify spending all those hours on a computer. But more importantly, I would like to learn from them, these are supposed to be experts in computers, and we know we've had some problems with the police computer. I would like to get their recommendations on how we can make the police computer more secure, more reliable, whatever it needs, and whatever administrative practices they recommend should be made there to change in the Police Department regarding those issues. So I'd like to make a motion to have Aurora come here, present themselves, and answer these questions. And any others that you might have, too?
Yeah, I, Mr. DePiero, I think that's a great idea, but I just wanted to confirm a few things also. If you want to go through with the vote or the motion for having Aurora show up, I think that's a great idea. And then I'd like to expand a little bit about in regards to some of the bills that you had just discussed, if that's okay? So do you want a?
Second this motion.
Second motion? Okay, great.
Are we just going to have one company come in and discuss how our town's computers are being approved?
Well, I'm not asking them to name names or make this a case on any one individual. I'm looking to see how many hours did they spend, what are their qualifications, and what do we need to, see, the budget process is coming up soon. We're going to be having a budget process, and the Police Department is one of those budgets. And if we need to shore up the Police Department computer and their processes, this is the time I'd like to hear about it before we look at the police budget.
I have no problem with, obviously, Aurora coming in, hopefully maybe next council meeting, and I'll have quite a few questions to ask them because I'm concerned in regards to the work they did. And hopefully, they'll be able to settle my concerns. But we'll go through the motion, and then I have some questions to elaborate on Aurora, too. So yeah, I agree with you.
Maybe you can hold up your questions until they're here.
No, this is concerning some other issues in regards to the vote that we had, but I'll entertain, and we'll go through the motion to have them come. So go to roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Okay, just to clarify this, to have them come to our next meeting to make a presentation. March, September.
Great.
March or the, February?
This February meeting.
February.
Oh, February, okay. I thought they were.
If they can make the next meeting.
If they can make the February, rather than come to February, because when are we starting the budget process?
Should've been started already.
We started it.
I mean, the council, when are we going to start?
March.
March. March, all right. I would just like to have this presentation from them before we get to the budget.
That's fine, and hopefully we get them here as soon as possible because there's a lot of concerns about it.
I vote yes.
Great.
Mr. Palusa?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Great. Council President, may I elaborate?
Good.
Great. Ellen, I just want to confirm, Mr. DePiero stated that the Aurora bills, and I have my extensive copy here also, I believe we paid Aurora $267,000, was it?
The way it's broken, the way it's broken down is, prior to, I'll say, this, the end of December 2014, prior to that, there were bills in the amount of approximately $47,000 that were paid. Then there was a settlement, when you talk about the upwards of $600,000 cost in addition to the 47, that there was a settlement reached to pay $220,000. Of the $220,000 then, $150,000 was paid on December 23rd. And then the other part of the settlement was that the remaining $70,000 would be paid at approximately $5,000 plus a month until the $70,000 was paid.
So we're going to pay them a total of how much money?
$220 plus 47.
So $267?
Right.
Okay. So the question I have, and I know, Mr.
And that, as of the end of December 31st, 2014.
That's as of December 31st.
Yeah, that's, you know, no more, no more of anything that was discussed, any bills, that is truncated at that number. There's no more, no more going back to any more funding. That was the settlement.
So the questions I have are, Aurora actually charged the town over $600,000, and you were able to use your skills to negotiate them down to $267. The question I have for you now, since we negotiated their price down to $267...
I, thank you for the, thank you.
Well, and I admire you.
But I, no, no, you know.
Do we have a contract with them so they don't come back and sue us and say they want the rest of their money?
We, at that, at that negotiation, and I will say that Dennis Driscoll of John's Firm was the key negotiator there, but when you tell the person who's negotiating, "I don't have any money, so, and we're not paying any money," they kind of get tight with the, no, all joking aside, because this is very serious. The, yes, we have now entered into a contract going forward for, so that we don't have any, any questions. So I don't know.
Well, Ellen, if I may, there's an accord and satisfaction letter that's been signed by Aurora in which they release the town from any additional monies over and above the $220 that was negotiated.
Okay.
Right, and I think that has been distributed. People have asked for it.
Yeah, there's no concern that they're going to come back and say they owe more money.
Absolutely not.
Okay. So, but I just want to get on the record, the original bill from Aurora that they charged the town was over $600,000. And that's in these redacted bills that are here. So I would love them to obviously show up, because I have a lot of concerns about the bills, because $600,000 is a lot of money to look at a computer, but I haven't been prepared for a public.
Well, it's actually more, it's actually more than that.
Because, remember, we got.
Because, no, because they've indicated that there was additional time that they had not yet billed.
Oh, okay.
And they were told, "Don't even bother sending the bills."
So how much more of a bill was it?
It was more.
It was north of 700.
Oh, it was over 700,000?
It was more.
The other, the other thing I would like to say is...
I'm in the wrong line of work, I got to tell you that.
No, and the other thing is, just for the record, because we've talked about it, the hour, the hour rate of 200, which I did talk to the press and said that that was the municipal rate, because their normal rate is double that, at least double that, if not closer to $500 an hour.
Okay. And listen, I appreciate everybody being, you know, honest, and John telling us about, obviously, there's more charges that we didn't receive. So that was part of the question. And, Mr. DePiero, you brought up a good point with, obviously, having them come in, because it'll educate everybody on this in regards to the billing process. The second question I have is this, and this is not to argue or to, obviously, get into a quarrel here with anyone, is that the only concern that I have, and, Mayor, I just wanted to, I know you have a lot going on with your family members, so I don't want to make you upset here.
Don't worry, I don't get upset.
No, and I mean this sincerely, because we spoke earlier. The only thing I was just going to ask was this, is that, Mr. DePiero, you had brought up, and I had brought up, I guess, like, two or three weeks ago on our last council meeting, you were concerned in regards to the amount spent on the case. And I obviously brought up my concerns in regards to, you know, the $225,000 or $220,000 that we paid for, and we really weren't quite sure how it was paid, how it was transferred, or how we voted on that. But needless to say, my concern was that I would like to get to the bottom in regards to the amount of the Aurora bills, and also legal bills that dealt with regards to the issue that we're contending with, and just to get a real grasp of the spending that occurred there. And again, I'm not accusing Aurora, I'm not accusing Mr. Inglisino's law firm, I just wanted to get true accountability. And we all collectively agreed unanimously that we would go through with the audit. You and I, and Ellen, had met with the auditor, matter of fact, we sat in the back there, and we probably put two or three hours of really good input of what do we collectively want to come up with in regards to this audit. And obviously, a week went by, we hashed out the particulars of the task conditions and standards of the audit, and we were all agreed upon that we were going to move forward. Now, remember, that auditor met with us, we have to pay him for his time, that auditor drew up a contract, and I have a copy of the contract, and we all agreed on it based on our emails. And I just want to plead with you to say, I wish you'd just give us the opportunity to go through the audit, because it was a well-sound audit based on Ellen meeting with us, based on Mike meeting with us, and myself, and obviously Ray Serenelli put a lot of time into it. So, again, I am not trying to accuse anyone. Obviously, even in that audit, Ray suggested that anything in there would be, obviously, under his observation, the bills would be redacted, we would see nothing that's confidential in nature of the investigation that occurred. And I just think that's an obligation, not only to the council members that voted for it, because we're all comfortable with it, I mean, we had the auditor, and at the time, Mayor, it seemed like you were fine with it. So I just would love just to reemphasize, maybe you would give it a consideration again, because I think it's just transparency. And the only reason I'm saying this is this, a year ago, when I came in, don't mind me, I'm getting dry-mouthed there, I was told the initial expense involved, and we were all there a year ago in closed session, because we're all getting newly exposed this, it was $80,000. So on January 14th, no, January 7, 2014, and I'm not trying to cause any drama here, I was told the bill was $80,000. And it was under my understanding, it was combined between Aurora and, obviously, Mr. Inglisino's law firm putting work into it, which I had no problem with. But again, a year later, the sticker shock that really kind of revealed everything was, when we moved that $225,000, and obviously, I was concerned about that, Mr. DePiero was concerned, and that's why I'm just trying to plead with the council that I think it would be in the best interest just to kind of get to the bottom to make sure that, again, we're going to have Aurora here and explain it, but if you have an auditor who is well-renowned, who is neutral to everybody, just to safeguard and say, "Hey, listen, they did do all this work, and it comes out to that." So that's what I'm asking you again, is if you could reconsider it. I'm not here to argue with you, or the council, or anybody else, too.
We do have all of Inglisino's bills right here in this, in this redacted form, the total dollar amount is there. All the auditor's going to tell you is, yep, those are his bills.
Okay. Okay, wait, I would just like, wait, let me just, I wanted to say something.
For Aurora, we're going to have the opportunity to ask Aurora personally when it comes.
Okay, Mr. DePiero, we voted five to zero, five to zero, you were in support of it. Matter of fact, Mrs. Sandman even was in support of it, said she suggested it, and the mayor as well. So all of a sudden, at the 11th hour, when we're getting ready to start the audit, we receive a letter from the auditor that the mayor has told him he is not going to pay him, and that the order is to cease.
Okay, no, when I, when I left that meeting, and listened to the tape, it was, it wasn't, you were supposed to meet with regards to the $250,000 charge, okay, not to audit the whole entire thing, knowing that there is, I didn't want to spend taxpayers' dollars knowing that I, we have this, and this is exactly what the auditor would have done anyway.
No, okay, we're going to hit that point where you're saying, we had the business administrator, she sat down with us, with Ray Serenelli, who is a well-renowned auditor, and he suggested X, Y, and Z. Mr. DePiero gave a lot of input that it was only going to be dealing with the matter in regards to the captain, and we were all fine with that. And Ellen, the business administrator who's been around for a long time, she was very pleased with that, it was in the emails that transpired. And getting back to the $225,000, and again, this was a kind of start of this whole issue with the audit. When I received the voucher, and again, I'm not accusing anybody, I'm not up here to fight, I received that voucher that a $225,000 payment was made to Mr. Inglisino, who then in return was paying the Aurora Company. I called Ellen on that, and my concern, and I said, "Ellen", I said, "You know, what happened?" And Ellen, as usual, she's on top of it, she goes, "Listen, I was able to negotiate that price down, yes, there was, obviously, an expense still on this, I didn't even know about it, et cetera, et cetera." And I said, "Well, you know, I'm just kind of concerned is that, I wish we knew that we were paying this, who authorized it?" And she basically said, "We did." And it was in a December, I guess, transfer of money.
December 13.
Yes, which came out of the police, policeman's budget, their expenses. So then it came down to regards to, I wish we would have known about that, because, not to say that I would have denied it if we were told that what that transfer of that fund was for, what we voted for. So now here's where we get down to the sticky situation.
Just before you continue, I just want to say, with regard to going forward, not on this issue, but issues forward.
Yes, you changed it.
We will make sure, in the past, and Ryan is correct, it would say, going from this department to that department.
Which is great.
But now we will say, there will be a descriptive reasoning for why the money's being transferred, why it needs to be transferred from for this account to that account.
Absolutely, and you had mentioned that, too, which is great.
Yes, okay.
So here's the only concern.
Just for going forward.
Here's the only concern I have is this, is that Mr. Inglisino received this payment, and I'm not here to badger Mr. Inglisino, obviously, he had to pay his client. But I just wish we would have known about that, because I'm told on many occasions, I'm in conflict. So my point of matters on that vote of that transfer of money, Paul Karifi voted for it, Brian Stanton, and all three of us are technically in conflict.
That's not, that's not true.
I'm not, I'm not.
So my, so my point is, because I'm told that I'm in conflict, so my point is, that is my concern. To me, if that was maybe a little bit more transparent, Ellen trying to correct it, Mr. DePiero brought up the fact that, hey, we're up at $500,000, and then we all collectively voted on this for an audit. So again, I'm just trying to plead with you again, I think it would be in the best interest just to satisfy the public, us up here, that everything was by the numbers, and if they did that amount of work, listen, I have no problem with it, we have to live with it. But I, I'm not up here to argue, I just think that we voted on it, you have still three other council members that voted on it, and I think it would be disheartening to the public if we don't do it and go through with it.
Here's, if I may, because I'm not up here to argue either.
And thank you.
I'm not here to argue either, but the fact that, you know, you have conflicts, and you recognize that, then you voted to do an audit on the same matter which you have a conflict on.
And I'll answer that back to you.
And we could be here all day with this, but that's the point, Councilman. I, I truly don't feel it's necessary to do an audit when all the bills are here.
Okay.
And this is all that Ray is going to, excuse me, Mr. Serenelli will be giving you.
And listen, I understand your opinion, we're going to get back to the conflict. In 2014, I was notified that I was a fact witness in March 2014. In this past October 2014, myself and two other captains on the Police Department, I don't want to mention their names, were no longer a fact witness. If I felt that I was truly in conflict of any monetary or trying to gain any confidential information, which I'm not, this is a compartment of my job, my duty, my responsibility in regards to, you're talking about $700,000 to Aurora, whatever the bills were for Mr. Inglisino, I'm assuming $200,000 or $300,000 involved in this case. I just think that we really have an obligation. And you have your senior councilman, Mr. DePiero, who kind of was the spearhead on it, which then we all had dialogue about, and we agreed. And again, we sat in the back with a business administrator who has at least 40 years' experience with the order. And again, you still have three other votes.
Twenty, 28 years.
Twenty-eight years. Well, see, I'm trying to give you 40, 12 more years of the town.
Forty years, forty years doing the business, but 28 in March, county.
Okay, see, I was close then. So I just think that, and again, with all honesty, we have nothing to hide. Again, I'm not trying to demonize John Inglisino, I'm not trying to demonize Aurora, I just want accountability. And you still have three other individuals that voted on this. And remember, Mr. DePiero, you and I were contacted by Ray Serenelli. We sat down there, and we discussed, obviously, the task conditions and standards on that audit. And if you want me to read what the standards were on this audit, no one was asking for any confidential information in any way, shape, or form. We were just making sure that $700,000, I don't know how many hours of work that is, maybe that's 1,500 hours, at $200 an hour, it's probably even more than that, maybe it's 1,700 hours. We just want to justify paying a company almost $700,000.
But that's, that's not an audit. An audit is to compute and to make sure that the monies that were paid out, that there were bills and vouchers to support the payment of those monies.
And that's where I go, you keep mentioning my name.
And, 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 back during our dialogue, we sat there for three hours, we spent the whole week in regards to the task conditions and standards of this audit, and you fully agreed in this dialogue that you wanted to have this audit. So hold on. Tuesday, I find out that you met with Aurora and Mr. Inglesino that following Tuesday. I wasn't invited to be there. Mr. Peluso was. Mr. Peluso suggested that I should be there because he can't make it. So needless to say, that day in particular, you were supposed to drop off that signed copy of that audit to Town Hall, and you never did. So then I had to come over, sign that copy of the audit, and then obviously give that to Yancey, to give the copy to Ray Saranelli, who obviously went over it with the business administrator and signed off on it. So I am being transparent here. We all voted on it. Mr. DePiero, you agreed to everything in that audit, and I have a copy of the audit that I'll leave here. So I don't know why all of a sudden that we can't, we already have to pay the auditor, why can't the auditor come in and check out $700,000 in bills to make sure that they truly did the work and make sure that the vouchers meet up with what John Inglesino did and then with Aurora? And not only that, I asked a simple question from the very get-go, in the very, very get-go. Does Aurora even have a contract? What does their contract entail? What are the task conditions and standards on this particular contract? What is the hourly rate? What are we getting actually billed for? Because again, public, you all have, can see a copy of this. I'm not looking for anything that's confidential. But the reality is, we never voted on a contract as to what they're supposed to be getting paid and what they're supposed to be doing. So those are my concerns, and I think they're very normal concerns.
I can't answer your questions on certain things because they were in closed session litigation minutes. So I can't really give you any detail on that because this matter hasn't been resolved yet. So, you know, I know, I've been reading things and certain media and certain individuals say things which are absolutely false, not even.
Mr. Barbario, I'll just let you know, the minutes that I have were approved closed session minutes that obviously now are open to the public. We.
Litigation matters, they're not open to the public.
Well.
Any closed session, any closed session minutes concerning an active litigation are closed and they're not available to the public.
And I can't discuss it in public.
Okay, but the reality is this, if somebody wanted to obviously say that I violated whatever.
Oh, I'm not saying you violated.
But that's fine. I asked on January 7th how much our bills are.
Councilman Valori, you took the wrong, I'm not accusing you of leaking on the press.
Okay, so $80,000 went to $700,000 in one year. And again, the only, the only reason why I got involved with this just now is because there was a tran.
You were not advised that there would be an $80,000.
Mr. Inglesino, don't interrupt me, please. There was a transfer of $225,000 to pay Mr. Inglesino. So we could do two things here.
That's not true.
Either I'm pleading with you to go through with the audit to be transparent to the public, there's nothing to hide, or secondly, the $225,000 that we weren't even supposed to be voting on, okay, you can have it both ways, then return the money back to the town, and then we'll work out all those legal matters in regards to the payments to Mr. Inglesino to Aurora. Because I still find it hard to believe a company that billed the town $700,000 is going to settle for $267,000. So $700,000, 267, it's a lot of money. We have a library in High Wath that needs to be refurbished. It's probably about $700,000 to do that. We could have done that for the library. So my point is, I just want to know.
Let's get to, I don't really want to discuss how we got to this amount of money and how, why the fees are so.
But that's, that's not my problem. I just want to know accountability.
No, it is, because it is part of litigation. And it's part of with four court orders not being willfully been defined. This could have been over with a first court order, but you want me to give you reasons to lie across so much?
But Jamie, the only thing is, is this, that is a matter that's being worked out litigation-wise. The reality was this, if we were just briefed month by month to say, hey, listen, we're up at $200,000 or $300,000 on this, and this guy is not doing X, Y, and Z, but at least we know. I mean, just let's face it, I think that if you knew that you just transferred money of a quarter of a million dollars, it's a sticker shot.
But Mr. Valori, my bills are.
And I commend Ellen for getting the bill down from $700,000 to 267. So all's I want is this, if we all have nothing to hide, it's accountability. We said the word in the back before that you and Ellen want it, and I do agree, it's accountability, that's all. Thank you.
I'll say, listen, okay, don't take it the wrong way, but when I was a councilman and there was transfers, I asked what those transfers were for. I never, you know, I never voted on something. I always would sit, and I would talk to the controller. The mayor then allowed us to do that, so, and I allow you guys to do that. So, but what I will do, Councilman Valori, is we could talk later on.
Okay, thank you. And we're civilized.
Mayor, what you just said, though, and I specifically asked Mr. DePiero this, who's been on the council with me a lot longer than I have, is when transfers are done in the budget, as we've done in the past, from fuel to legal to pay legal, and even Mr. DePiero stated, yes, that's correct. What happened here was money was transferred, $250,000 from police salary and wages to police operating expenses, and then a check was cut from police operating expenses to pay for that, where it should have been transferred to legal and then paid. Whereas then council members would have seen where this $250,000 was going, and that would have caused questions on to why 250 was being transferred into legal. But no, it was transferred to police operating expenses, and then a check was cut from there. And Mr. DePiero, I even asked you, and you even stated, yes, it's always been done that way. So something was done differently this time, for whatever reason.
Yeah, what I stated.
And I think, and I think this is the thing that you asked the auditor.
That's exactly.
Because it was, it's a proper procedure. Instead of me explaining it and defending it because it wasn't done in the past and it was done this time, it is a legitimate way of doing business. I did it for 21 years in Denville, how transfers were made. However, instead of coming from me, it should come right from Ray Saranelli himself. You can ask him that question about how transfers can be done. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. I mean, that's, you know.
Ellen, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, scheduled meetings, February 24th, 2015, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting. March 10th, 2015, 7:30 PM, agenda meeting. Minutes for approval. Any questions, concerns? Administration?
Ellen, Sam.
Yeah, do you mind if, yeah, okay, thank you. As I said at one of the last meetings, I would just like to point out some of the things that we're working on and some of the positive results we've had with regard to ongoing things that are happening in our community. I'm very pleased tonight to say that after a lot of hard work by our engineering firm and, I mean, our engineering group and many people, even Gabe, who was our grants person and is retired now, that today, to date, we have received and signed off on a voucher for over $2,592,000 from the FEMA money for the hazard mitigation. And that's, that's very good, and we're pursuing the other monies as well. And we're very pleased with that. Another thing that I'd like to report is that Cable Vision has now, they're complete with all the installations of what our cable company has provided to them, and they, they're changing over Channel 21 from the county feed to our own feed. And in that process, again, it didn't happen overnight, which nothing seems to happen overnight anymore. But we're hopeful that the entire community will be switching over to that feed by the end of next week. The other added bonus of this is that in the utilizing this Cable Vision and utilizing our own funding through what we got in the franchise agreement for the Cable Vision money, one of the things we will have is we'll have a bulletin board up in addition to some of the things we had as far as with notifying through web page and Facebook and this. And this will be, this will be great. This will be our own channel. It'll, it'll be directed, and you'll be seeing a document and an agreement between the Board of Education, working with us through Cable Vision. So I'm pleased to talk about that. I don't see the resident here, but we are keeping up on various things throughout the community that are not what Precipiny is all about, and that's one of the locations as to working on the property. I'm working very closely with our construction code officials as well as our zoning officials to make sure that we deal justly and fairly with properties that are not kept up. We are going to be pursuing, Councilman, Rob has asked for some additional working together on making sure that we, after, give a warning, we need to have some teeth in an ordinance that we'll try to pull together soon as and later to make sure that we have that to go out and get the properties cleaned. On tonight's council meeting, I'm pleased to say that we are also pursuing grant monies for the initial starting phase for the Smith Baldwin House. You have to start when you go for this grant monies through the county with firstly by coming up with, it's a non-construction grant for the plan. After the plan is established, and I'm thinking that, more than thinking, I'm very confident that we'll get that funding. Then after we receive that funding and put a plan in place, then we go again for the planning. After the planning is done, we go for the plans and specs documentation, which is then paid by the county funds, and then lastly, bricks and mortar. So that's on for your consideration this evening. Also on consideration is we have, we're doing our due diligence with regard to our COA obligation. And I'm pleased to say that Newbridge will be working on a project at 929 Knoll Road, and we have a million dollars in HMFA funding that's in our township's name. And this document that's on for tonight's discussion is for the 250 of that million dollars to be given to our obligations.
Ellen, if I say, you've satisfied your, Precipiny has satisfied its COA obligation.
Yes.
The question is that you have monies in your affordable housing trust fund that if you don't spend here, the concern is that that long arm from Trenton may go up the turnpike and find its way into your affordable housing trust fund money and spend it someplace else. So what Precipiny has been doing, which I think is a prudent course of action, because at some point, your affordable housing obligation or your COA obligation will likely increase, notwithstanding the minimal increase that is in the current proposed third round regulations, which are being challenged. And so if you can exceed your COA obligations and ensure that the money that is in your affordable housing trust fund account is spent in Precipiny, then you're ahead of the game. And so that's really what this is about, is making sure that your affordable housing trust fund money is spent in Precipiny and that Trenton doesn't somehow try to get its hands on it, which Trenton has tried to do in the past, including last year when the appellate division told them they couldn't do it. But it doesn't mean that they won't continue to try.
And I have been doing that. A couple of months ago, we approved in the spending plan $75,000 or $78,000 that went for special homes. We are working on another additional $34,000. This is all money in place that's for this. And we continue to do that. And you also passed some other documentation for another project within ourself, which is in our spending plan. So I thank you for that. Also, there's some information on called first responder identification cards. It's fully paid for by the county. All districts and volunteer service units have been advised, and each unit is to contact the county directly and set up their unit, and county is paying through a grant, so there'll be no charge to the township. The last item that I'd like to address is, I know that we have Justin Lisa coming, he's our engineer, to talk about another topic that's a longstanding topic. But one of the things that I would like to bring in because before Brian, Brian, I won't interrupt you when you do your, the Manor Road, because Manor Dam, because I'm going to just address it now. And that is, we did try to have a meeting, but the weather was not cooperative, so we had to cancel that meeting. I have asked Justin to reach out for Cherry Weber to have that meeting, if it's okay with the council, to have a presentation by the engineer and also the consulting engineer to tell us the timetables as to the improvement to that dam, which is long overdue. So I'm hopeful that they will be, it would be in the affirmative, and they'll come out and answer all the questions that those folks have a right to ask and have been asking, and they'll get it right from the horse's mouth. And I'm hoping to have them here on the February 24th meeting, Council President, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, bids taken. January 28th, 2015, at 10:00 AM, seal proposals for improvements to Lake Precipiny Dyke Number One. And February 4th, 2015, 11:00 AM, seal proposals for the reconstruction of Reynolds Avenue, Phase Two, moved from January 28th, 2015. Quotations, proposals, qualifications, received requested, none, ordinances, none. Anything for discussion? Resolutions? Any questions or concerns? Okay, no questions or concerns. Township office reports, engineering report, Mr. Stanton.
Okay, Reynolds Ave Improvements, Phase Two. Project runs from the end of First Section to approximately St. Andrew Lutheran Church. It consists of drainage curve improvements as well as resurfacing of the road. Bids were open this week. The recommendation of the award is on the agenda. Council needs to adopt a resolution awarding the project. We don't have to award until it comes in, right? Okay. Lake Precipiny Dyke repairs. This project consisted of repair to West Dyke along Lakeshore Drive to correct minor deficiencies identified during last year's dam inspection. Deficiencies are not severe or threatening, but must be corrected in accordance with the NJDEP requirements. Bids were open for this project last week. Recommendations of the award is on the agenda. Council needs to adopt a resolution awarding the project. Ball Avenue Improvement Project. Gas relocation has been completed. All other construction has been stopped due to weather. Will start again, will not start again until we have favorable weather. No council action required.
Okay. Okay, Chief Financial Officer, Attorney?
Just a couple of items, Mr. Council President. One of the reasons why I piped up on the COA issue is because that was a matter that was recently the point of contention in court between the township and RD Realty. And just wanted to very briefly brief the public on where we are there. As you know, RD Realty has filed suit against the township for the township's failure to change the zone at the Waterview Site from PUD. And in essence, what they are seeking to argue is that the township has abused its discretion under the general welfare clause in the municipal land use law by failing to zone the property in the way RD Realty wants. They have made a number of constitutional claims. We've argued that all of those claims really fall under the purview of the Mount Laurel Doctrine and really are regulated and controlled by COA because the township availed itself of the COA process some years ago to, in essence, provide itself with a shield against the sword of developers' litigation. It's a very important point that the township has satisfied its current COA requirements because that is the main defense that we have in court. Number one, trying to convince the judge that the claims by RD Realty really fall under the Mount Laurel Doctrine. And number two, that because we have satisfied our COA affordable housing obligations to date, that we are not suspect to any further liability for additional units. The judge has reserved decision, will be getting a written opinion in a few weeks. I felt overall that the, that the argument went well. But I can tell you that the case does have interest with a number of attorneys who practice in this area throughout the state who have contacted me because the developer community has become, I think, frustrated at the lack of progress on round three of COA requirements. And so they are really trying to find alternative theories to expose towns to additional liability. Mr. Biscayre is one of the most respected lawyers in this area, has been practicing in this area since Mount Laurel I, back in the 70s, believe it or not. And so, you know, that's sort of what's going on there. Secondly, on your agenda for next time is passage of two agreements, and it's resolution number one, one with Partridge Roy Vale Associates and the other with Partridge Roy Associates. These are agreements whereby the township will provide refuse service via bins to these apartment complexes, all really made possible by the fact that we won in the Baldwin Manor litigation. And as we had hoped, and as has turned out to be, is that other apartment complexes are now soliciting us to provide service to them and signing release forms in favor of the township while so doing. This is 520 units in total that the township will be picking up, which brings our total unit count now in terms of providing service to over 1,300, which is roughly a third of all apartments in Precipiny Troy Hills. And my understanding is, is that this is the last complex that the township services now by way of can operation. And so that once this is signed, there will be no more can pickups in the township as a practical matter. So we would, we would strongly recommend support of these agreements. And lastly, as you know, we have on the agenda for action tonight, a memorandum, action on approving a memorandum of understanding with the state of New Jersey in order to set forth the terms whereby the township will utilize the Greystone sewerage treatment facility. This will provide a permanent solution for the township after the unfortunate breakage or malfunction of the Skyview pump. And 260 residences right now are utilizing sewer service via temporary arrangement with Morris Township. And Paul, I don't know if you want to just very briefly provide an overview of those terms, but they are very favorable to the township.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Inglesino. As a matter of fact, I'd given a presentation a few months back, and exactly that's what happened. What happened is there was a collapse of a force main of over a mile long, which also caused the failure of our Skyview Road pump station. So the township entered into some negotiations with the state and got State House Commission approval to connect to the Greystone Treatment Facility. And the cost of treating our wastewater is very favorable in comparison to many of the other options that we explored. One of the options I discussed was going, as we are temporarily being treated by the Butterworth Facility in Morris Township. And the other option was to do a double pumping situation here in our township through evaluation. And through myself in evaluating all of the various options, Greystone proved to be the most safe and fiscally responsible selection for this township.
Okay, Township Officers Committees?
I have some reports. First one is for the Environmental Committee. There's a meeting tomorrow for the Environmental Committee to discuss a change in ordinances. And I believe Mayor Barbario and Council President, Mr. Corriffi, will be there. Also, the Historical Committee, they identified all the properties that they wanted in the master plan that has been completed. Also, Economic Development Committee, we were proud to be at the GAF Corporation today, representing our community with the mayor and Councilman Lou Valori. We talked to them about giving them a personal orientation to their employees, that's 600 new jobs to the Precipiny area and filling one of our largest vacancies. So, you know, everybody did a great job on that. And, you know, Economic Development stands ready to assist them as well. stands ready to assist them as well. As far as the Chamber of Commerce is concerned, they gave out welcome books at the GAF orientation today and rewarded the employees with benefits from the Greater Precipiny Rewards Program. So I'd like to thank all those that came to the opening of GAF today and everybody's involvement for the other committees as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Communications, correspondence? Questions, concerns, applications? Okay, this time I'll entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes. When you come up, please state your name and address and sign in. You'll be given five minutes. When you have approximately 30 seconds left, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. My question is for Councilman DePiero. Councilman, you lifted up that document that you say you have all of the bills from Inglesino. I haven't seen it. I just found out about it when you mentioned this, but my gut feeling is that those bills date, is probably the first date is dated October 1st, 2013, with work being done September 12th, 2013?
So I must see some of them?
No, I didn't see them.
Okay. That's not Inglesino.
You want Inglesino bills?
Yes, yes.
Oh. October 1st? This date October 1st, 2013.
Right. If you look at the Aurora bills, what was the date on that? The first, the first item of the bill? I think it's February 8th.
June 7th, 2013.
Right, and then if you look a little further down, the first date that they did actual work? I think it says February 8th, 2013.
February 8th. Where? Over there, okay. That's the first bill, yeah.
Right, okay. So, according to the bills that you have, Inglesino, Mr. Inglesino's law firm didn't do any legal work on this case from the time Aurora was hired or first did the first work in February? Not until September of 2013? What about those March, April, May, June, July, and August?
Mr. Nelson, to be quite honest with you, why don't you finish your five minutes? But these are not questions for Mr. DePiero, these are questions for me.
Ms. Inglesino can answer that.
And I'm certainly happy to ask them, but why don't you continue on your five minutes?
I'm just suggesting that you don't have all the bills there. I think you have the bills just from when the separate case number was opened, but there was certainly legal work done that predated when you opened the file in October 1st, 2013. The only other question I have is, I see all the experts on, except that, I see on the agenda the hiring of all the, this professional service agreements for the next council member, but I don't see any of the attorneys who weren't approved last month. My question to Ellen is, the attorneys who weren't, not including the township attorney who is a holdover, but the other attorneys who weren't reappointed, are they still doing work for the town, or do we have to get a?
That's a legal question, and I'll address that as well.
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
That's all I got.
Okay. Mr. Nelson, having been an elected official myself and having been a mayor of myself for a number of years, it was always important for me that, that the time for professionals be accounted for, and that is why we set up different matter numbers for different litigations, so that if you want to know, for example, how much time and how much money has been spent on the James Karifi case, and that is the case that the township is litigating against Mr. Karifi to retrieve back the information that was taken and we still don't have, then we can literally press a button and provide you with that number. Mr. DePiero has those bills. They're, they're significant, it's over $200,000 of work. The time is the time, okay? It is what it is.
I'm not disputing that.
Now, with regard to, that case commenced in October of 2013. Now, Aurora, and I'm sure you've read the court documents, so you probably know what I'm about to say. The way in which we came about that case was by engaging Aurora in connection with the previous case, and that is the case that James Karifi suing the township because he wasn't promoted to the position of deputy chief. And so the time for Aurora, which you know because you were a councilman at the time and we had these discussions, the time spent on Aurora prior to October was spent in the other case. Mr. DePiero also has, I don't know if he has it handy, the amount of time that we spent on the other Karifi case, which if memory serves me correctly is in the 50 some odd thousand dollar range. So that's why you have Aurora bills that predate our time on the second James Karifi case, because, okay, so that's, that's question number one. Question number two is, with respect to other attorneys, if you were to review the township code, and I didn't know you were gonna ask this question, so I don't have the code at my disposal at the moment, at least that provision, gives the township attorney the ability to engage other counsel without authorization from the governing body to assist me in matters in which, you know, I may not have a particular expertise. And so that, you know, as we have those situations arise, then I will be doing just that so that the interests of the township are not prejudiced by the fact that experts in those areas have not been authorized by the governing body to do work. It doesn't mean that I can't authorize them to do work, and I will do so when it's in the township's interest to do so.
All right, that, I didn't know, I wasn't expecting that answer, but that makes sense.
I didn't think you were, but if you read the township code, you'll see it right in there.
Absolutely right. I do know that was there. I just, it never occurred to me that that's how it would work, but that, that makes sense.
You just have to read the code.
You're right, that makes sense.
Thank you.
But you just point, you picked up something that, that I just thought of. With the hiring of Aurora in February, I guess it was February when they did the first work, and going back and reviewing your statement last month that you gave to the council and to the public, you said that Aurora was originally hired to aid in the, in the defense of the township's lawsuit that Karifi had brought against the township. That's, and then you kind of just said that also is now. Now Aurora was hired to, to help aid the defense of, the town's defense in the lawsuit that Karifi had brought against the township, and that's why these bills for the investigation didn't occur later when it was Precipiny v. Karifi instead of the other way around. Right?
Okay.
Okay. My understanding was that it was never the township attorney who was ever handling the defense of the township, but it was our insurance company's attorney that was handling defense of that case. And if that was the case, then why wouldn't the defense attorney, who was representing the town via the insurance company, hire Aurora on its own if they felt that it was gonna aid in the defense, and why wouldn't the insurance company just cover those costs?
They were, the defense counsel was counsel of record in the case. Quite frankly, you know, our role when the township is hired by, you know, insurance counsel is more limited because we're not counsel of record. Counsel of record came to us because the case, because of the nature of the case, and we worked with them in a collaborative effort.
Okay, all right, so, okay.
Time's up.
Time's up.
Time's up.
Thank you.
Frank Coche, 3800 Rachel Terrace, Pine Brook. I'm compelled to come here and speak before this council.
Sir, could you just speak into the mic?
Oh, you're good. I'm compelled to come here and speak before this council because of the four statements that were given here by Nancy Snyder, when she stated the following, that hot dog trucks roam about this township, setting up shop anywhere they feel like, and they are sight for sure eyes, and they infringe on the prosperity of brick and mortar stores that sell hot dogs. None of this is factual. For the past 25 years, there've been hot dog vendors in this township, and at the present time, there are only three licensed hot dog trucks in the town. So this is false, and to go further with it, these trucks are built in our country, the United States of America, and the way they are built and designed, it's impossible, impossible to travel in or around a township or a city, because the operators of these trucks would be confronted with spillage of hot water, foods that could cause serious injury, and that spillage can cause damage to the equipment in that truck, and to go further, it could cause fires. So it's impossible, and I say this factually because any of us can contact the manufacturers that built these trucks, and they will state the same. She further goes on, not only to force they state something, but to slander, and that slander was brought about our business, about our family name. She identified our truck as a red district light truck, red light district truck. We all know what that means. It's a symbolism of disgust and disgrace. A red light district? Innuendo, that we're pimps and prostitutes? We're decent people that work that truck. We've been in this town for six years and never hurt nobody and treated everybody good. A red light district that I notice as a former police officer in the city of East Orange, I'm very familiar with red light districts. Prostitutes and...
Sir, please keep it down back there.
I have a right to be upset. This is slander. It's criminal and civil what she's done to us, that my son is confronted by his friends about my fiancee being on a truck, and she a prostitute? How would you like to be confronted with this? Or we go to dinner on Baldwin Road and we're coming out, and people call me to the side, they ask what's going on? Well, he's got prostitutes running around that truck, Frankie? I'm a retired police lieutenant that devoted 25 years to law enforcement, and I don't deserve this. I don't deserve a smear like this. It's wrong, and I hope somebody conducts an investigation and puts on paper record this township never had a red light district. These people in this town are excellent people, beautiful people, and I don't say this just by six years of being in this town. I owned a taxi limo service out of Denville. I picked up people all over this town, and they treated me with decent respect. When I, when I conflicted cancer, these people, they were my fears, but they were my friends too. Numerous calls to my home, cards in the mail, having some lawyers from Howard Mill, to Mount Tabor, to Rainbow Lakes, to Lake Kailua, to Lake Precipiny, and I'll tell you, beautiful, beautiful, and you know why this township is wealthy? I'll tell you why it's wealthy, because you have corporate campuses, people from all over the world, people from India, people from the Middle East. These people bring wealth because our children intertwined in the, in the grammar school and high school level, black, white, red, yellow. And I know how this town is. I see this mayor. He might not see me, I've seen him in action. I've seen him traveling with that black Explorer, checking at a patrol speed, as cops use as jargon, getting out, talking to people. Young guys coming to my truck, identifying this man, not as the mayor, Jamie.
Sir, you have 30 seconds.
Jamie, okay, Jamie, and then I find out for these young guys, he's a righteous dude. I like hearing that, because that's what they said about me in the ghettos, as a cop, because I treated everybody with respect. I don't care if I locked him up for a homicide. I treat him with respect, and I never labeled somebody with this way he labeled me. It's deplorable and it's despicable, especially to be allowed in this township. She didn't only smear my family name, she smeared this township. Thank you, and I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
It's my family, you gotta understand that.
My name is Gene Di Giacomo. I reside at 2-14 Hartley Place in Fairland, New Jersey. That was my partner, who you heard, and he speaks from the heart. We've been in business in this town for six years, and we tried our best to follow all the rules and regulations that set forth in the ordinances that you graciously make up. You, well, what he said, I can't, I can't speak any more than what he said, but the thing that bothered me worse than anything, when we played that tape from the last council meeting, the moniker for prostitution is a red light district. My wife, my daughter, my partner's wife worked on that truck. I've had people come up to me and ask me what's going on there? Is there prostitution going on? And you know what the answer to that is. We are both members of the East Orange Police Department. We retired, Frank retired as a lieutenant, I retired as a captain. We would never allow anything like that to happen. You have two police officers, actually off duty, and we would help any way possible. I don't know if you all read the paper about a year and a half ago, Frank was opening up the truck and Fairfield was involved in a car chase. It was an individual that robbed, strong arm robbery and stole a car, and he was going westbound. He subsequently crashed at the, at the intersection of New Road and Route 46. He then took off on foot. Lo and behold, he saw it, he took chase, and he caught the individual behind the Palace Store parking lot. We've had people come up to the truck who found lost property. Woman came, a guy, excuse me, a gentleman came up to me, found a woman's purse. It was a resident of your town. She had $262 in the purse, and I immediately called the police department and we gave that money back. Anytime your officers stop somebody, I'll back them up. That's the way we are. But again, no matter what you decide on, okay, we have no regrets. We work in this town, we get along with everybody, but the call, the call, this town and our truck, a red light district, smears everybody, because this thing is on the news. People read this, they see it, and like I said, I have customers who live in other towns come up there, come up to the truck and ask me, what are they talking about, a red light district? And then I have to explain, and I thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen, and I appreciate it. God bless you.
Thank you.
Still not shoveling your driveway?
How they are?
Yeah.
First of all, I'd like to thank the men and women of the road department of this town. They've had to deal with an extraordinary winter weather, long hours, must've been cold, God help them if they had to go to the bathroom, but the conditions, the rest of us were in our house and we saw. However, every now and then they goof. I hope this doesn't happen again. After cleaning my sidewalk, my beautiful fire hydrant, and my driveway, it was all turned into the Kumba Ice Fields of Mount Everest. The pictures will speak for itself. We've addressed the issue. I am sure it will not happen again. Greg Snyder personally came out and shoveled those, whatever they are, boulders, but that happened because one person was probably very tired, wanted to get his job done, and that could only happen if the vehicle is going too fast. But, on the whole, these men and women have done over a million miles of snow cleaning in the, in the past few weeks, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. I also want to thank another person. He's sitting back there. His name is Nick Libavoff.
There he goes.
He has been, he has helped so many of us in the past months. He has done fire hydrants, and he's even helped people who didn't know, and frankly, He has done fire hydrants and he's even helped people who didn't know and frankly didn't care. Because I personally rang the doorbell of my neighbors whose walk he cleaned, whose fire hydrant, and I said, "Do you know who did that?" Well, they didn't care. And in fact, one neighbor who has a gas snow thrower that he cleaned by hand when the Kumba ice thing hit, didn't bother to reciprocate and help. We don't expect you to love your neighbors. Just help us. Many of us are older. We can't do what we used to do. And we have a lot of disabled veterans who put their lives on the line, who now can't shovel. Help them. By, by what the water department told me, there are over a thousand fire hydrants on private property. Ladies and gentlemen, that translates to over 2,500 votes.
She's good, Tony.
Okay? If nothing gets you, that should. Another reason I'm here is to correct the Parsippany Life Edition of February 4th. They said I came here for help to get my fire hydrant cleaned. I didn't come here for that. I came to get that ordinance amended so the responsibility of cleaning fire hydrants is transferred to everybody who benefits monetarily on their insurance and physically when the fire happens, it's there for them. I've called the editor for retraction. I haven't gotten a return call. I expect the press to report correctly.
Amen.
I thought about what we could do. $5 on everybody's taxes isn't going to hurt anybody. That could translate to a service or even hiring, creating jobs for somebody to do the walks for physically disabled, our veterans, our older people. You know, they don't, they don't have Mr., some of them don't have Mr. Shovel. I'm lucky. Oh, you'll meet him, by the way, at some point.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, I don't like coming out on cold nights to see you. We have two snowstorms coming in in the next three days. Help those of us who no longer can physically do what you all take for granted. We can't do it anymore. Our bodies, our bodies rebel. And I want to thank you for listening to me three times. I really don't want to come every two weeks. If I have to, I will. I want to thank you for listening. And again, I want to thank the men and women of the road department for what they have been doing for us. They're unsung heroes and I've heard some stories about how they have gotten citizen abuse. That's a shame. I think it's time that somebody comes like me and says, "Thank you, guys. You do what we can't, but we won't do."
Thank you.
Thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, ma'am.
Both his sisters are- I believe he is. He has-
Good evening, council members and I guess Mr. Mayor, he left. I just have a question.
Just please state, state your name and number of address.
Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't know that, right? Vincent Farrar, 22 Alba Place. I just have a question. I know a lot of people come up and badger Mr. Anglino all the time. We have a new lawyer for the Board of Adjustment. I was gonna ask the mayor, so I'm not really sure who's qualified to answer the question. Has anybody checked the new attorney? I think Peter King, I was there at Swearingen. I know Mr. King. If he made any donation to the mayor, to the, anybody on the council? I mean, is pay to play up to date? Just have a question. I know people have been here in the past and they ask a question. Does anybody know?
I know he hasn't donated to me.
Okay. Does anybody else want to volunteer?
I have no idea if he's up to date or not. We, we don't decide-
Is the mayor, right? Or the administration?
The zoning board, the zoning board picks their attorney, not us.
But every, 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 every vendor has to submit a form, including attorneys for the various boards. They have to submit a form in which they attest to the fact that they're in compliance with Parsippany's pay to play law.
And what's the name of the form?
I don't know. I mean, I, you know, we all, we all submit it and fill it in.
So if you're professional, you have to submit that.
If you're a, if you're a vendor of the town, you have to submit that form in order for the township administration to process payment.
Okay. The reason why I ask, I know Mr. King was a prosecutor. I think everybody knows he was a prosecutor.
He was appointed by the mayor?
And he resigned.
No, he wasn't.
Well, he was a holdover. He was reappointed.
But he resigned.
But he was, he worked under the mayor's terms.
Right, right. No, I know. That's why I said he left. The guy I want to ask a question left, so. My, my question is, I, I would like to know if, I mean, I know the pay to play because I used to be a councilman, if he donated any money to council people, to the mayor?
Well, that should be on the-
And if he solicited-
That should, that should be on the R1 forms. In other words, you know, council people have to submit R1 forms-
To the election board.
Down to the state.
Okay.
And any contribution that they receive in excess of $300 per election cycle has to be itemized on the form. So if you want to know whether Mr. King donated to any elected officials, you would check their R1 disclosure forms.
Okay. Let me rephrase my question. Maybe I didn't ask the right question and I'm gonna address it to you because you seem like the person that wants to address this. Is that okay, Mr. Anglino?
If I want to address it, but I guess I would be the appropriate person to, to address-
Who checks from the town and doesn't our-
You check, Elliot.
Our ordinance or our resolution or pay to play law, whatever way you want me to put it, they're not even supposed to solicit donations? So who checks?
Nobody checks the R1 forms. Otherwise, I mean, you'd have to add full-time people just to do that. The way the system, the way the system works is, is that when a vendor is going to do business with the town, they have to submit a disclosure and they have to certify, is what I was looking for before, that they have, that they are in compliance with the town's pay to play ordinance.
All right.
Nobody from the town goes through proactively and searches-
So if somebody's in violation, how do you know? If you're in violation, how do you know? Who checks?
Well, presumably somebody would check an R1 form and, you know-
You go online, correct?
And they're online. And if, if I made a donation to somebody up here in excess of the-
Okay, and let's say I find that it was a donation made, who do I go complain to?
You would complain, no, you would have complained to the township.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Because it's our law.
The township doesn't care?
No, no, no. If, if, if anyone has evidence that the pay to play law was violated-
And by the way, I mean this against you too.
Then they, they need to, they need to notify the township. You can notify the township administrator or you can notify me, unless it involves me, which it doesn't. Then you can notify me or the township administrator.
Okay, so there's nobody in the town, in the administration that checks?
30 seconds.
That's what my question is. Yeah, no problem.
No, you would, you would, you would, why don't you finish and then I'll-
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So you would notify, if you have evidence of a pay to play violation, then you would submit that evidence to either myself or to Mrs. Sandman. And you would say, "Hey, I think there's a pay to play violation and here's the evidence that I have to suggest that." And then the township would have to look into it. The township does not proactively search everybody's R1 forms and match them up against donations that were made. It's just, it's too cumbersome, it's too labor intensive. I don't know of a single municipality that does that. But what we do is we require all vendors to certify that they are in compliance with Parsippany's pay to play law. And also, I, I believe, I'm going off of memory, but I believe the certification also requires them to affirmatively certify that they have an understanding of the laws. And the laws prohibit, as you suggest, both the contribution and the solicitation of contributions from others.
Okay, so my understanding is, I'm sorry, I know my time is up. Thank you. Uh, uh, so you're saying nobody really checks a citizen, like when, I know people in this audience have got up in the past and questioned attorneys, probably including yourself.
If somebody has evidence of the violation-
You have to bring the evidence.
Yeah, if somebody has evidence-
Nobody checks, okay.
If somebody has evidence, they need to bring it forward-
Thank you.
And then it would be looked at.
And it's online.
Yeah. Yeah, the R1s are all online.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I must be psychic. Vinnie, Vinnie, here, I got something for you. I happened to make a copy today. It's a crying shame moving from land use ethics to criminalization behavior leading to permits and other zoning actions. If you want it, I'll leave it here for you. The presentation by Aurora that's being asked for, I find it hard to believe it could get any better than some kind of a sales pitch or an advertisement for Aurora. So I'd be skeptical. It'd be interesting, but to me, it would just be like an advertisement for Aurora. You know, they're not gonna admit to, you know, whatever this $700,000 was or anything. I find it hard to believe. And it's also revealing that they reduced it. So it shows that you put pressure on them and if they can get away with something, they will. Thanks to Ellen Salmon over there, I guess she called their bluff. All right. I was with Mr. Inglesino in the courtroom in Morristown.
You like me better in court than you do in the council chambers. You made that very clear, Mr. Homiak.
I accept you for who, who you are. What, what town you were mayor of, if you don't mind me asking?
Rockaway Township.
All right.
From 1996 through April of 2002.
Lot of open space there.
I, I want to, I want to make a remark about the courtroom. In my opinion, the judge was very polite, overly polite to RD because they were just spinning, spinning their wheels about this COA thing and it was really ridiculous. And it was the judge and his mercy that tolerated their baloney. But one of the things that RD had said, they said when they were in town and they said it in the courtroom, said, "Parsippany has to keep up with the times." Well, there's RD's time, there's Parsippany's time, and then there's, you know, as they say, there's Puerto Rican time, you know? But, yeah, my wife's from Puerto Rico. But here, here's the thing here. One of the things they say, there was no precedent, right? A precedent for what RD was trying to do because COA already had established everything?
Our argument is that there's no precedent.
Precedent.
Right. There's no statute or case that supports their theory of their case. That's an argument that I made.
I found something.
Well, don't, don't, don't do their work for them.
No, no, it's, you want to hear it? No, RD says-
Not if it helps them.
No, no, well, it wouldn't help them unless we actually could have a time machine, go back in time. It's called preemptum, preemption rights. And that's what the colonials did to the Indians. When an Indian tried to have a deed or own a property, they were told that they couldn't because there was preemption rights that the Europeans asserted over them, that an Indian cannot own property, that he can be absurded by a European, has to come before an Indian. And what RD Realty is doing to Parsippany is what the colonials did to the Indians. But it was an active law of might makes right in early colonial America. I also have one more question for Mr. Inglesino. We're gonna turn back the time machine to 2012 when we had our open space funding that can be used for other purposes because of a passed action by another administration. Now, you brought up a thing called municipal sovereignty.
30 seconds.
What prevented municipal sovereignty from defending our open space ordinance as it was originally established under the referendum of 2006? All right?
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Homiak, I hope to impress you with what I'm about to say because I'm impressing myself with what I'm about to say and I'm talking about my memory. The initial, and because we, we put time into it and I knew it, the initial referendum in Parsippany to establish an open space trust fund was in the late 1980s. It was not 2006. And that initial referendum provided for the utilization of open space money for recreational purposes. And so the concept of using open space money for recreational purposes dates back to the original authorizing referendum that was voted on by the public in Parsippany. So what Parsippany has done, based upon referendum voted on by the people, is that they have modernized its open space ordinance to reflect what the state permits municipalities to utilize open space monies for. And the authority for that is based upon the initial referendum that was passed and I believe the year was 1988. And if that's correct, I'm giving myself a gold star tonight.
Thank you.
It was 88 or 89. It was 88 or 89.
You're then silver.
Thank you.
Half a star.
I get that, half a star.
That's it. You timed it up.
All right, do you want my time scale?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Hank.
Hi, Tony Elena.
You can pull that mic out and hold it in your hand if you want.
Just wait, you have to wait.
Just hand it to her. In response to John Inglesino's claims against James Cariffy at the last council meeting, please note the following facts. His first claim-
Your name and address.
Tony Elena 106 Camden wrote. First claim, Cariffy is continuing to withhold Parsippany flash drives or the standalone hard drive on which Cariffy is alleged to have wrongfully copied Parsippany information. That claim is incorrect. As reflected in council's letter brief dated October 20th, 2004, council's certification dated September 18th, 2004, which is Exhibit A, Cariffy turned over possession of all those items nearly six months ago. In fact, James Cariffy turned over all the items without the need of any court order, except for his family's Apple computer. All of the items were turned over to Jeffrey Brenner Esquire, the computer forensic expert who was court-appointed with Parsippany's consent. Because Cariffy no longer has the items in question, he cannot be truthfully accused of withholding them from Parsippany. He has no copies of the information sought by Parsippany, other than what has already been turned over. Parsippany subsequently moved to compel Cariffy to turn over the family Apple computer. Cariffy fought back because the computer contains his family's information and does not contain any information sought by Parsipony. The Cariffy family Apple computer is the only item Parsipony requested or sought from Cariffy since July 2014. Cariffy surrendered the family Apple computer to the court-appointed expert back on August 21st, 2014, which is nearly six months ago. Therefore, it is untruthful for John Inglesino to say that Cariffy is still withholding the information he took from Parsipony because Cariffy already surrendered the devices in question, which are no longer in his possession, custody or control. The second claim made by Mr. Inglesino, resolution of Parsippany's lawsuit against Cariffy for alleged wrongful copying of Parsipony information has been delayed by Cariffy- seem to have been focused on other matters. Moreover, Parsippany itself has actually been delaying the matter. In December 2014, Mr. Carify served notice that obligated Parsippany to appear and give its deposition through a number of persons, including Mayor Barberio, Minister Inglesino, and Chief Phillips. See Carify deposition notice to Parsippany, which is Exhibit C. Parsippany refused to go forward with its deposition, and there is now a pending motion by Carify to strike Parsippany's complaint, putting Parsippany's claim in jeopardy of dismissal. Based upon Parsippany's refusal to go forward with the depositions, see Carify motion to strike Parsippany's complaint, which is Exhibit D. Nearly the same circumstances have arisen in Carify's lawsuit against Parsippany. Parsippany was court-ordered to produce its documents and appear for its deposition through Captain Miller. See Ramsey order compelling Parsippany to provide documents and produce Captain Miller for deposition, which is Exhibit E. In contempt of Judge Ramsey's order, Parsippany did not produce its records in response to nearly half of the document demands Parsippany was court-ordered to address. Also, Parsippany refused to allow Captain Miller to appear for the deposition at a mutually agreed date, on or before January 5th, 2015. As a result in Carify's lawsuit against Parsippany, there is a second motion against Parsippany, this one seeking to strike Parsippany's answer, putting Parsippany's defenses in jeopardy of dismissal. See Carify motion to strike Parsippany's answer and defenses, which is Exhibit F. Therefore, it is untruthful to say that Carify is delaying the litigations, or that he is delaying the resolution of Parsippany's lawsuit against him by allegedly failing to turn over the stolen information and records. Third claim by Mr. Inglesino, there are only two cases pending between Carify and Parsippany, and neither of them asserts claims against Mr. Inglesino or the mayor, so they have no conflicts of interest. That claim is incorrect as well. There are actually three lawsuits pending between Carify and Parsippany, namely, A, Carify's first lawsuit filed October 2011 against Parsippany, which is Carify 1; B, Parsippany's lawsuit against Carify for alleged wrongful taking or copying computer-stored information, filed in November 2013, Carify 2; and C, Carify's lawsuit against Parsippany, Mr. Inglesino, the mayor, and Chief Phillips, filed December 2014, which is Carify 3. Exhibit H is a copy of the filed complaint in Carify 3, which was commenced in December 2014, and includes claims against Inglesino, including a civil-rico claim.
Thirty seconds.
Mr. Inglesino is represented in the action by the Wilson Elster Law Firm, which is not only aware of the fact that Carify 3 is a pending lawsuit, Mr. Inglesino, but also has mentioned in court papers filed on behalf of Mr. Inglesino. While it is impossible that a client, while it is possible that a client might be, not be aware of information known to his attorney, including the fact that there is a lawsuit pending against the client, to suggest here seems impossible, given Mr. Inglesino is an aggressive attorney who is very aware of the disputes involving Carify, and is both personally and professionally involved. There's also a pending motion to assert claims against Mr. Inglesino in Carify 2. The claims are asserted in Carify's new counterclaim and third-party claim. See Exhibit H, as demonstrated by the annex letter, brief to Judge Ramsey, Exhibit J. Carify asserts that he has viable claims, and he is expecting to be granted leave to file his counterclaim and third-party complaint in Carify 2, which includes claims against Mr. Inglesino. Therefore, it is incorrect for someone to assert Mr. Inglesino is free of any material conflicts of interest, based upon the claim that there are no pending claims or lawsuits against him. Claims and lawsuits are pending against Mr. Inglesino, even though he denies that. Thank you.
Well, there is a pending motion to seek to reinstate a cause of action that was voluntarily dismissed by Mr. Carify. That motion has not been decided yet. If that motion is decided in the affirmative, and I suspect that it may be, because those types of motions are typically granted, then in that case, there would be a pending action against me by Mr. Carify. But that has not been decided yet. In terms of the information, we have numerous court orders that not only compel Mr. Carify to return the information to us, but that also recognize, and this is the judge, this is Judge Honigfeld, this isn't John Inglesino, who find that he has willfully, Judge Honigfeld, in his August order, August 14th, I believe, found that Mr. Carify, James Carify, was in willful violation of previous court orders. Fact of the matter is that on December 6th of 2013, over a year ago, there was a consent order signed in which there was a procedure established whereby we should have received all of the information that he took. As we sit here today, we've only received a fraction of it, and we have been forced to file three motions of litigation's rights, all of which have been granted, all making findings that Mr. Carify has violated previous court orders, the most significant one being in August. Now, the only way, the only reason, the only person who says that the information is contained on the Carify family computer is Mr. Carify. But we know that when Mr. Carify represented previously that he turned everything over, we know he lied. We know that wasn't true.
Okay, Mr. Inglesino, that's your opinion, Mr. Inglesino. I'm going to stop you here now, Mr. Inglesino, because you're conflicted out of this case as well.
I was asked a question.
You know it. The woman just stated a court order that said that the documents were handed over, so I think we just need to...
No, we didn't. There is no court order saying that.
All right, we need to... Mr. Barberio, Mr. Barberio.
Let him respond, just let the audit, let the audit go.
Look at the conflict.
This is pending litigation.
Mayor, we shouldn't even be, right, Mr. De Perro, we shouldn't even be discussing it. You're correct.
Well, when there are people that come up and attack me on the public record, Mr. Council President, with falsehoods, then I have a right to respond.
This resident just read court documents.
No, she didn't. She read a prepared statement that was not a court document.
Mayor, I just suggest maybe going forward, we kind of know what the guidelines are, the rules, where, hey, listen, if there's a civil matter going on, it shouldn't be discussed, doesn't matter who it is, so we don't go back and forth, and then it starts skidding.
Mr. Valori, in all due respect, the resident has a right to come up to the microphone and say what she wants to say.
Okay.
Can't tell her that you can't come up and say what she wants to say.
We have an ongoing litigation case.
But I have a right...
Yeah, I know.
I have a right to defend my conduct and to correct what is in the public record.
Okay.
And discussing what is in the public record is not in any way inappropriate.
Okay. But here's an example. We know there's matters going on with another department. Somebody comes up and asks that, about that matter concerning somebody or individuals, I think that it would be just in our best interest to say, hey, you can't go further with this, discuss it, because there's litigation. I think on both sides...
No, she can't, you can't tell her that.
Even if there's litigation on it?
You know, the First Amendment's a blessing and a curse.
Okay.
Okay? The blessing is everybody gets to say what they want to say. The curse is it doesn't have to be true.
Okay.
We should not be discussing it.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Oh, wow. Roy, you've been quiet all night.
I almost fell asleep. I don't sleep.
Now, this is a professional. Roy, he's jealous of you in the back, just remember that, very jealous.
Is there a new thing, two-minute prop time?
It's only going to take Roy Mesmer, 10 Drummond Drive. As I do every year, ladies and gentlemen, the audience knows, this is not anything against Mr. Inglesino, I did it for Luther, I did it for Dakota, but it's the same thing on both sides for the new people that are here. You can see the numbers, I'm not going to address the numbers, the numbers speak for themselves. The only thing I'm concerned about here is Porter again and his partners, they received $22,000. Again, Roy Mesmer, 10 Drummond Drive. Tonight, I and my fellow residents want the truth. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help me God. And I have a family Bible here, in the family, for years. So no matter which Bible you pray to, want the truth. Because the numbers here tonight are wrong, they don't jive, it's a joke. Big joke, thank you. You can interrupt me. Now, the good, the bad, and the ugly, ladies and gentlemen. The good, the mayor gave a nice concise speech this morning at GAF, the new corporate headquarters, at the new corporate headquarters. It was a very good, it's a very good ratable for the town. You can just look at my white sheet as I'm talking. My sheet doesn't address any of this behind me. The bad, I saw the redacted OR invoices totaling over $600,000. Now, it doesn't take a rocket scientist, I'm sure all in life, all of us have been cheated, screwed, whatever word you want to use, what word I can use on public TV, but when somebody gives you a bill for $600,000, and then they say, ah, but I'll take $250,000, there's something wrong. I'm sure the vast amount of this Aurora bill deals with the retired police officer investigation. $600,000, what did this officer do that warranted $600,000 from one of the most reputable in the world? I don't want to say what their title is, but this investigation firm, they were involved with Operation Firewall. You could probably Google it, Mayor, you're good at Googling. So what did this officer do? Did he sell top Parsippany police secrets to the surrounding towns? I mean, does Randolph have our secret files now? The FBI investigated and apprehended four spies in this country in the last 20, 25 years on a going alphabetical order, Ames, Pollard, Hanson, and Walker clan. I'm sure each investigation didn't cost $600,000 in computer forensic analysis. This witch hunt is a disgrace. The first invoice dated February 2013 was already addressed tonight, but, you know, Jonathan and I don't talk, so I don't know what he was going to talk about, he doesn't know what I'm going to talk about. Submitted for payment, wasn't submitted for payment until June 7th or 8th, I have them right here, 2013. What a coincidence, a few days after the mayor's primary. But even on their bills, they say you got to pay within 30 days, or you get one and a half percent. Anybody in the audience wants to see my file? See me after my five minutes. I'd like to know the scope of the investigation, and how many computers were downloaded, or whatever word I'm supposed to use with Aurora. So where does this absorbent amount of expense been paid from? Where are we taking these dollars from for 2014, 2015? From senior citizen programs, from children's programs, new equipment for the town, whether it's DPW or whatever, police department replacement equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? You get my gist. This amount could have been used just to buy police body cameras that I've been pushing for. And it's nice to see a police officer's not here tonight, because we don't need one here. Did Inglesino's firm receive a referral fee? Attorneys usually get a referral fee. Can we get reimbursed from the Garden State Self-Insurance Fund? I'd like to get a letter from this administration. Now, the ugly, Mr. Mayor?
Thirty seconds.
Inglesino and the firm should be fired, not just for this situation, but for many other things. I said that with a lot of people in agreement with me in this town, but they don't have the guts to get up to this microphone. Has Aurora been involved in other township investigations? I'd like to know what they are. And in closing, my prayers tonight will be with Caleb Mueller, her friends, and her family. Thank you.
Mr. Mesmer, my firm does not receive a referral fee from Aurora. We've never been referred anything from Aurora, and it would be inappropriate to receive a referral fee in Aurora. What attorneys are able to receive referral fees are personal injury cases, when they refer them to other lawyers. Secondly, with regard to your numbers up there, that $10.99, the $822,000, Aurora's numbers are included in that number. So when you say a $10.99, there are, as Joe Kovalchek explained last spring, and you were here to hear it, maybe you forgot, that when there are professional fees...
I don't forget anything.
Expert fees and so forth that go to me, I get a $10.99 for them, but those aren't all fees payable to my firm.
Why don't they go to you, Mr. Inglesino?
In fact, in fact, you may recall last year that there was monies from FEMA that were transferred into my trust account and then paid over to flood victims. That money shows up on the $10.99 to my firm, even though those monies, and they were hundreds of thousands of dollars, are not fees payable to my firm. So a $10.99 is not representative necessarily, and this year certainly is not representative of the fees paid to my firm.
That's your trust account.
Secondly, with regard, and with regard to what the purpose of the case is, we know, as a matter of fact, and I'm speaking from public record, that some of the information that we retrieve back contains personal identifying information on individuals, social security numbers, healthcare numbers, and the like. Maybe you don't watch the news, and you haven't heard about what's going on with TurboTax or Home Depot. We cannot permit people to take personal identifying information from this township and just have it.
So why was it arrested by the...
Because it's a civil wrong. We have an obligation...
It's a criminal law.
We have an obligation to get it back. And you know what? If that information gets into the wrong hands, and there's class action lawsuits, then the very people who are here criticizing us for bringing the suit would be the same people saying, why didn't you protect us? The real question is, why are we sitting here? Why are we sitting here in February of 2015, and we still don't have the information back? We don't have it back. That's a fact. Now, whether it's all with Mr. Brenner or not, I don't know. That's what Mr. Carify says, but he has said a lot of things that have been proven not to be true. The bottom line is, the fastest way to end this case is to give us our information back. And that still hasn't happened yet. And yes, unfortunately, it costs money to obtain that information back. But I have a job to do, and my job is to protect the township. And my job is to get back the confidential information, whether it was wrongfully taken or not, let's assume it wasn't for a moment, even though it was. There are court orders that demand that it be returned, and I would be derelict in my duty if I did not do everything that I could to retrieve the township information back. So you want to defend the person who's in violation of court orders and criticize me for the amount of money that it's taken? I wish it didn't take any money. I wish we didn't have to pursue this case. I have other things to do with my time, there are so many hours in the day, but I am duty-bound to get our information back.
Now, it's going to get fun. Mr. Inglesino, you have all the time in the day? Why'd you have to bill us $13,000 for Montefiore?
I said I don't have the time.
When I brought it up years ago, I would have handled it, that violent crime guy, the Italian last name.
Time's up.
He could have handled it.
Time's up.
Sorry. We know we didn't get the truth.
Yeah, you don't lie.
Pat Patacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Just a few things I'd like to go over tonight. Statuses, I'd like to know the status on the golf investigation, the sewer utility investigation, the civil lawsuit against James Carify when the police chief said that no administrative charges would be filed, and there are. Has anything been looked into on that? Ellen, I filed a complaint with you in December, we were supposed to meet on that, you were supposed to meet with Lou and Paul. I'm still waiting on that. It was a complaint, the employee complaint I filed, it came in, we spoke. We haven't gotten anywhere on that, I have not been...
Oh, no, you were to contact us.
Let her finish and then...
No, no. I'm sorry.
I was waiting for you to meet.
Yeah, we did meet.
No, we met.
Yeah.
You were going to meet with Lou and Paul or somebody, and then get back to me? We've never had any more discussion, so we just want to get through with that.
Okay.
Okay. Aurora information, security, and risk. On October 2nd of 2014, I as a resident and concerned taxpayer filed a open request, requesting a total amount bill for the investigations into James Carify. I received a bill totaling approximately $46,000. Some charges warrant added on, his tax out there, his interest, there's all this kind of crap out there. Okay. So now my question is, I asked for the total bill by Aurora Security. I got a $46,000 bill. And now I see we're paying an... requesting a total amount bill for the investigations into James Kariffi. I received a bill totaling approximately $46,000. Some charges weren't added on, is tax out there, is interest, there's all this kind of crap out there. Okay. So now my question is, I asked for the total bill by Aurora Security. I got a $46,000 bill. And now I see we're paying an additional $267,000. I'd just like to know where the hell those bills were.
$220.
Whatever.
Yeah, just--
I'd like to know where those bills were, when this request that I put in, and I got $46,000. Where's the rest of this bill? Are there any OPA violations here? I'll be checking, because this is ridiculous. How a taxpayer could come up and request information and get a bill for $46,000, and two and a half months later, the bill is up to $220,000? Difference between a forensic audit and an audit. Big difference. I'm surprised at you, Mr. DiPiero. I have admired you, I have respected you. I have not heard one mention of any problems with the Aurora bill or anything else until just recently from you. I've heard it from the other council members, but just recently you are getting concerned with it. And I'm giving you credit for that. But I'm not giving you credit, any of you credit, for letting Mayor Barberio abuse his powers under the Faulkner Act. I consider it to be abusive when somebody thinks that they have total control over a town council who is supposed to run the town, supposed to pay the bills. I just don't understand it. I am so infuriated and so disgusted with what we have here. I just can't go on anymore. It is just-- It's ridiculous. I have asked three times to have Mr. Inglesino removed. This is a suggestion, and you apparently all agree because you're trying to get him off. I don't think this should continue. We need to stop this trap. We need to stop it now. We cannot continue this.
Thirty seconds.
Forensic audit, the only reason not to do it is that there is something to hide. Okay? You can shake your head yes, you can shake your head no. What you have out in the public is that you voted to do a forensic audit. Then you were advised it's not gonna happen. You as a council, I think, you can band together and do something about it. And I implore you to do that. We cannot continue along these lines. Only one making money here is Ka-ching over there. Okay? We have all these lawsuits, I just mentioned all these lawsuits. Who is getting paid for this? Why do we have so many lawsuits? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just say this, because I just want to respond, Council President. We don't create the lawsuits, Pat.
Oh, yes, you do.
Just so you know, we do not. But we have-- No, you know what, you got your chance to speak. Fact of the matter is, the town defends itself, the town has to do certain things. Sometimes you just don't like it, cost to cost. It costs money. But-- Oh, excuse me. The fact of the matter is that there is litigations in towns, and the town has a right to protect the taxpayers from things that happen in town. Although you don't like to hear it, that's a fact. Okay, Pat.
Okay, see, no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
There's copies on the desk of the resolution.
We gonna offer these two resolutions?
Resolution R. 2015-042, Resolution Township Council Township, Presipity Troy Hills, authorizing 2015 grant application to the Morris County Historic Preservation Trust Fund for Historic Preservation Plan for Baldwin House located at 460 South Bevillik Road.
Second motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
R. 2015-043, Resolution of the Township Council, the Township Presipity Troy Hills, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Mental Health, and Addiction Services for our acceptance and treatment of search.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes. Okay, we're going to be going back into closed session. Resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law, 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public, whereas the meeting in certain circumstances, whereas a township council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas a township council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege, personnel matters, and following litigation matters, Port Troye Vel Associates LLC, Port Troye Associates LLC versus Township Presipity Troy Hills, and J. A. Alexander versus Township Presipity Troy Hills. Whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving confidentiality above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public, now therefore be resolved by the township council, the Township Presipity Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes.
Motion to reconvene, it's open session.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Kariffi?
Yes. Entertain a motion at this time to end the meeting?
Make a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.